School Board and Rutland Northeast Supervisory School Board at six o'clock tonight. Welcome, welcome in introduction. So let's just go around the room, say your name and what board you're on. That would be great, just so we can everybody know who.
Hi, my name is Natalie Steen, and I'm on the OVUU Board for Brandon.
I'm Barbara Ebling, I'm on the OVUU Board and the RNESU Board.
Jeremy Gildrian, I'm on the OVUU Board.
I'm Padrae Gamba, and I'm a student rep from OV.
I'm Brendan McLaughlin, and I'm also student rep from OV.
I'm Craig Bernhardt, and I'm an OVUU Board member.
Derek Larson, OVUU Board Member. And Brandon?
Lori Bertrand, OVUU Board and RNESU Board.
Kristen Hubert, Superintendent of Schools.
Charlene Bryant, Recording Secretary for the OVUU and RNESU Boards.
Devin Fuller, At-Large Board Member.
For OVUU.
For OVUU, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It's alright. I'm Brett Mullin, OVUU Pittsburgh.
Eric Pearson's OVUU Pittsburgh as well.
And online, Jacob, you want to go first?
Um, hi Jacob, I sit on the Barstow Board and the RNESU Board, I hold the At-Large seat.
And Robin?
Robin Crossman, Barstow School Board and RNESU from Barstow.
Great. Thank you. Alright, so we've already called the meeting to order. I need someone to make a motion from both boards to review and accept the agenda. So from OVUU, can we get someone to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A second? And from RNESU, Barbara, moving it. Can I get a second? Jacob, thank you. Alright, any thing we have to add? I don't think so. So all of those in favor of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, perfect. Communications with parents, citizens, and staff. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to us tonight? Okay. Let's see, governance process, ratify parent professional and bus driver master agreement. Do we do that in open session?
No.
No. So I need someone to make a motion from each board to go into executive session.
With me.
With Lisa and Kristen and Brenda.
So moved.
Second.
And so moved for RNESU Board.
Okay, and can I get a second for the RNESU Board?
Second.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, session, so do I hear a motion?
And it was at six twenty-four.
Motion to approve the contract.
Okay, that's for OVUU. I need a second for that one. And Derek?
And I move for RNESU, we approve the contract.
And can I get a second from RNESU, please? Um, that's Robin, who's seconding. All of those in favor of approving the tentative agreement between the pair of bus drivers and RNESU and OVUU, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we have approved the contract.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I, yes.
For OVUU?
I'll move for RNESU.
RNESU, okay, I need a second from RNESU to adjourn. Robin, thank you, and I need one from OVUU.
So moved.
Thank you, Devin, and a second, Derek. Okay, we are adjourned at whatever time it is, six twenty-six?
Do you need this back, by the way?
Six twenty-five.
No longer confidential.
Nope.
What's that?
You're no longer confidential. Okay.
But we'll take it back if you don't want it.
Oh, tell her she's probably in the wrong meeting.
Alright, so it is six twenty-five. I'm going to call the OVUU Board meeting to, you guys can leave, thank you so much, Robin and Jacob. Have a good night.
So Jen, Rebecca, and Jessica.
Calling the meeting of the OVUU Board at six twenty-six.
Right.
Can someone make the motion to approve the agenda, please?
Second, Natalie.
Natalie and Barbara, thank you. All of those that approve the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we have an agenda, thank you. Communications with parents, citizens, and staff. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to us? I haven't gotten any let's talks.
No.
Okay.
Just trying to think, Barstow.
Moving along then. Consent agenda, someone want to make a motion?
So moved. We approve the consent agenda.
Okay, and Derek, thank you. Alright, all of those that approve, all of those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we have a consent agenda, thank you. Alright, so next piece of the puzzle is a presentation on the Student Advisory Council.
Indeed.
I'll turn it over to Brendan and Padua.
Okay.
Start? Okay, so.
Hi Christine.
Alright, we, Student Advisory Council, we have.
Hi, how are you? I'll come see you tomorrow. Okay, sounds good.
Turn being on now before you start.
Is that your mom?
It's Marshall Bruce. What's happening?
Hey, can you, can you all hear us? I think the owl's not connected anymore, Dan. Are you?
No, I unmuted the owl.
Can you all hear us?
Okay, great.
Can you tell me who's up there?
Do they know the meeting started, though?
The meeting started now.
Okay, so while they're talking, you guys can go ahead. Try, this is third time. Third time's charm.
So we had the Student Advisory Council, we had committee, or Student Advisory Committee. We had our first meeting last week. And there were four students. There was myself, Padua, Jordan, and a student named Elliot Pulser, I think.
Pulser.
Pulser, yep. And we just discussed several issues and what we wanted the committee to do and what we thought its objective should be.
And what are those?
Sort of issues. One of them was talking about the, how big of an issue like behavior is just in general, and then middle school especially primarily. And, Padua?
Yeah, we, so, yeah, we talked about how to improve student engagement outside of the school day, like coming to school functions and all that stuff. We talked about the, like a student council check-in, so what the Student Council has been talking about. We talked about adults' emotional responses to student behaviors and conversations in the classroom, and how sometimes that's lacking a little bit. It could be improved. Bullying issues and adult responsibility or responses, communication between adults and students. Generally, just kind of what's going on at OV and how to get that information to students, because students do not use their emails. I can, I can, I can say without a doubt that we do not check our emails. Well, Brendan and I do, we're okay. We, we talked about this Listen Up Project and... Is the music listening? That's okay.
The List of Demands?
Right.
Yes, List of Demands for adults at Otter Valley and RNESU schools, so what we expect of teachers and like what they're not doing right now, and how we think that can be adjusted to fix basic issues.
Yeah, we had also, we will look over the Portrait of a Graduate thing and see how it, it matches students' experiences and expectations of what we think we should be getting versus what we are getting out of OV. And we, and then PBAS stuff, needs for staff and adults to make stuff work. So students nominating other students is a form of positive recognition. Flaws in the, there's a system called Otter Bucks, which is basically where teachers recognize specific students for doing like a specific good thing, and then at pep rallies and stuff, they, then there's these, these pieces of paper that look like dollar bills, but they have otters on them. And they get thrown in the air and someone like catches one, and it's like, it's like the kid. I, I really don't know how it works. I'm sorry.
The nomination is meant to be for something that you've done that's in line with the pride values, and specifically one of those.
Yeah.
And just expanding that more to help increase more out.
Yeah, this was the first meeting, so it was kind of just like a, it was a little bit of a get to know each other and then getting to know kind of the committee that we've all decided to join. And our next meeting is January 4th, when we come back to school.
So is this going to be a monthly meeting, or how are you planning on giving the words out to students?
So it's going to be a monthly meeting and at, and last week when we had talked about it, we, kind of goal number one for the, the, the committee is to get more than four people on it. Which is, so at our next meeting, we're gonna, it's, we're just gonna bring a friend. Someone who isn't exact, we're just gonna kind of like, be like, hey, would you want to come join this thing? And then we'll read them the list of the stuff and, and it's, ideally, it would be someone who is not involved in student council or a different kind of school-related committee already.
We could try an email blast.
They don't check their emails.
That's how I got Brendan and Padua, they're the only two who read their emails.
I actually have a question about that, because I agree with you, I don't think, I'm certain students don't read their emails. But the things that students do look at, TikTok or Instagram, are obviously not useful for school, you know, dissemination of school information.
Yeah.
So do you have a solution for that?
Not right now. It's something that we had, we did kind of mention at that meeting last week, the fact that students don't read their emails, and people don't read their emails, no one really pays attentions, pay attention, pays attention to the announcements every day, I'm so sorry. Brendan is the one who reads the announcements every day. So that is kind of a, it's, we, that's kind of a roadblock a little bit. We don't exactly know how to talk to students. And, yeah, it's something we definitely need to figure out.
Yeah, we're mostly just bringing up broad issues that we want to tackle.
I think the Bring a Friend sounds like a great way to go, because then it can spread that way.
Exactly.
What is the Listen Up Project?
So the Listen Up Project was a project from 2020?
I think that's when it started, yeah.
It was when it started, and basically it was a bunch of teenagers throughout the state who got together over the summer for a two, couple weeks, for like a, for a couple weeks in the summer, and it, the end result was this really cool musical where they all talked about what it's like to actually be a kid right now, kind of, and like grow up in Vermont. And, and what came out of it was the, what was it?
List of Demands.
The List of Demands. Which was like, it was, it was what we want to see.
As students.
As, as students and as, as, as kids, as active community members in Vermont.
Well, it sounds like only four of you get to do that, because you're the ones being.
Well, you know, it's.
Do we have a copy of the List of Demands? Is that something we can see, or?
Yes, we have our own, so Barbara, Derek, and Lori all saw the musical. They were at a conference where they showed it. We have our own streaming rights, we could actually present it in the theater. We also have a series of discussion questions, so you can watch, say, one twenty-minute snippet and stop and have a guided discussion based on, you know, whatever. So they do a really nice job, and from it, as Padua mentioned, they have a List of Demands, which is worded fairly aggressively, but it's basically a, hey, we're the kids. If you want us to be successful in Vermont as students, this is what we need. And it ranges from access to counselors, to more teen centers, to more classes that fit our needs, to like, it's a pretty diverse list of demands. So we had talked about showing it to the board, to students, to OV faculty, and then potentially coming up with a list of OV demands, you know, you know, for student experience, what they need to be successful and graduate, you know, with, with good student outcomes.
It sounds like it also has to do with the community as well.
Oh, yeah.
Teen center, teen centers, that's not part of the school.
No, a lot of it was community-based and state-based as well.
Yeah, it was statewide and, and not necessarily focused on schools. It was focused on student needs and student, family perspective. I, I found it really enlightening. It was a real learning experience to watch from the student perspective, and it was really powerful, really well done.
Well, it sounds like something that we should all see, the community.
Yeah, I would recommend it.
And the director and producer are both willing to come if we do a screening event. They did bring in one or two students to the thing, so maybe. Then there's some, there was three OV kiddos who.
Sidney, Sidney Singh, isn't it?
There's, there was Sidney, and then there was two people that I know.
Oh.
Which is what I brought up.
And it's a, I mean, it's commendable, the generous offer that the filmmaker has made that all schools can use this free of charge to, for screening it. She really believes in the project, so I think, I agree with you, Devin, I think we should.
But anyone can go to listenup.org and watch the video. It's publicly free, but then she sends a seri, like a separate link that allows you to stream, stop, do the modules, if that's what your community wants to do.
Yay.
Yay.
Thank you.
Alright, I just have one question, so do you, who do you report to?
Who does the, like the committee report to?
Who put it together? Oh, so you report to her?
Yeah.
I mean, do they, they call me Kristen. I don't know how they report.
You let us call you Kristen.
Absolutely, in that room, absolutely, yes.
So do you have bylaws or is it set up?
No, they are a scanning committee, but it's still too new and we need more members to, I think, really.
I mean, because that would be, to me, that sounds like it's an ideal way for students to get involved and understand how.
And we did talk about that, that, on the other side, it talks about some of the reasons to get involved, student leadership, recommendation letter from the superintendent, if you choose to, Padua missed the vote there. But there is a couple of things that, in their effort to try and get more students, there are some decent opportunities if you want to get involved in student leadership broadly.
Will keep us updated, okay? Awesome. Alright, if everybody is amenable, and since we have all of the principles here, I think it makes sense for us to do the budget review, so that you don't have to listen to us do all of our other crap. Does anybody have a problem with that?
Oh, I mean, stuff, all of our stuff.
Very important work, yeah.
Charlie's already changed it.
Does anybody have a problem with that? Alright, so I am going to open this up to Brenda to provide us with the budget review of first draft.
Lori, we didn't get a copy of that in our.
No, we didn't, she's about to hand it out.
Okay.
Settling down into something else. Right. So I'm not sure where I should stand, so I'm just going to stand back here. No, I, I can see from a distance.
Alright, just checking.
Yes, please. So this is hot off the presses, and the other thing that I want to grab that's hot off the presses is the December 1st letter from the Commissioner of Taxes. But I'll kind of go through this, and then I'll explain that. So, you know what, the drivers for the budget decision has always been the same. This is kind of the backbone of where we start. What is the mission and the vision, what are the ends policies, what are our goals? Our focus on equity of opportunity for student achievement, and then of course efficiency and delivery that we accomplished through Act 46 mergers. So I won't read this, you all know your ends policy, but that's what we test each of our conversations about. So just to give you a little bit of, an outline on the timeline for the budget. So you'll remember in October, we came, we kind of set the initial environment, let you see and understand kind of what our current programs are, what our class sizes are looking like, what our enrollments are looking like, what Consumer Price Index and inflation was looking like, which we all know and feel is rising. Late November, Rutland Northeast received the first preview of their first budget draft, which we'll talk about throughout this, but that was delivered November 15th. And then early December today is Otter Valley, and early next week is Barstow's. And there's a fair amount, I feel confident in the overall number with a couple of holes in it, but there's still a fair amount of information that will come from the agency and other parties over the next couple of weeks to really put the puzzle together. And by early January, we'll have kind of the final review in a special meeting, and then the absolute sort of drop-dead date that we have to have an ad hoc budget by is January 19th to meet printing and warning deadlines. So just to reiterate trends in Consumer Price Index, I know we're all feeling it. We pulled together, because a lot of times people say, well, what does our community get? What does the person on Social Security get? So we looked at CPI a little bit differently this month than we did last month, and that was based on what CPI is used for Social Security benefits. And, I don't know if you can scoot up to see.
Dan, can you minimize your win, that, yeah. We don't need to see their faces.
Thank you. So you can see in the trends on the bottom, you know, pre-2021, we were 1% to 2%. And then in '21 to '22, we were 6, 5.9. You knew that when you built last year's budget, and you did a nice job building salary increases to remain and continue to be competitive. And this year, it's 8.7. We all know that, right? We all feel that when we go to the store as well. So that kind of helps the context of what we're looking at. And so then let's just talk a little bit about enrollments by grade. So we always pay attention to our class size policy. We're required to have a policy by the Agency of Education, and our preschool is dictated and determined by childcare services, so it's not a required component of the policy. But our K through 3, we recognize that a minimum grade should be 12. The optimal would be 14 to 18, with a maximum of 22. And that's because we really believe early intervention, closer and smaller students to teacher ratios will help support that early learning. In 4 through 6, and honestly, 4 through 8, they're really the same, I don't know why they're off by one. I think that was somebody, I don't know. So again, minimum 4 through 8, we're looking at 16 students per classroom. Optimal would be 18 to 22, maybe 23 in the 7th and 8th, with a maximum of 25. And then the high school goes back down in the minimum, and that's because we have a lot of special classes, whether they're AP classes or higher-level foreign language classes that we know will have lower enrollment. So we're saying, you know, kind of minimum is around 10, optimal is 16 to 25. I'm not sure really what 22 slash 25 was supposed to mean. So here's each school. As you're looking at it, the column way to the left is what we're projecting. And Lothrup is projecting more kindergarteners than we know of right now. That's a problem we know we've been addressing for a while, and that is that Calverly does not service the majority of our preschool students. So Debbie is confident, she has 23 little names on a list. That was important because she currently has, we currently have two teachers. And so we are maintaining or recommending maintaining two teachers for a class size of 1 to 12. The two columns in between tell you how close really our projections are. So the, the second column in is the actual enrollment on October 1st. So these are students enrolled in the school on October 1st in that grade. The FAR column is what we anticipated when we built this budget. And so you can see in Lothrup's case, there's 160 K through 6 students. When we built the budget, we projected 158 to 163. So the rationale for how we kind of age up the students based on that enrollment on October 1st is pretty solid. So Lothrup is recommending reducing one teacher based on enrollment, and we are monitoring grade 3, because that is low class size. Nashabie, much more consistent, as you can see, hits almost everything except grade 5, right smack dab into that optimal. With grade 6 being just a little bit on the higher side, but still not over our averages. And Nashabie is looking at a solid three grades per class. We are proposing through this that we would add some library support of 10 hours a week, two hours a day, and we do have a need for one additional paraeducator based on student needs. Otter Creek Academy, so sometimes our smallest school, our only multi-age school. Sometimes it's hard to see those grids, I'm sorry. By the way, it was purple on my screen. I don't know how you got to blue.
It's purple-ish.
Anyways, hard to see those screens, but that one's the hardest, and where actually you can see it. So the actual, again, that second column in, K through 6 is 80 students. We had predicted 77 to 79. So it's a pretty really good, solid predictor. Next year, we're predicting pretty much levels, 74 to 77, down about three students. And so we will always maybe adjust the, which school is multi-age, but you can see their ratios are, you know, kindergarten, again, the earlier grades, K through 3, we tend to try to get the smallest grades we can, and 4 through 6, a little bit larger. So 7 through 8, we don't really have traditional classes, they don't sit in the same class all day long with the same teacher. But just to give you some information, we talked to you about this in October. We did some review and some investigation, and they are down 40 kids more than we had expected, and we have found out that that is because of, of dropouts. So that's part of our story, we are aware of that, and we are addressing that. And we are assuming by looking at the 6th graders coming in from the feeder schools and the high school 12th graders graduating out, that we will have about 540 students at Otter Valley next year. We are proposing to add, we did change the Dean of Students position to a licensed position so that they have more authority and more responsibility. We added, are proposing to add, hopefully dual-certified English Language Arts and Social Studies teacher. And we are adding one intervention specialist, and that's somebody who can help with behavior services for students. So now I have to get closer. Can I go through all and then come back to questions? Would that be okay?
Sure.
Thanks, Jeremy. So again, to kind of recap the major program changes, Lothrup's school is reducing one classroom teacher. Nashabie is increasing one paraeducator based on student needs and adding 10 hours a week of library support. OCA is not changing, but I'm going to talk a little bit more about this. We have a fair number, not a fair number, currently we have three in next year's budget, extremely high-cost 504 students. So these are students that do not meet the definition of special education, but have costs that exceed $65,000. And so we propose to Rutland Northeast, and thus to you, that we centralize those costs at the SU so they can be shared and serviced easier. And that way, the Special Services Director will help, and she always does, and she's online, so she can speak to them, but in the placement and services of those. So as we go over the program budgets, the change. So as we go over the program budgets, changes, OCA is missing a 504 student placement because we are proposing that that gets shifted to Rutland Northeast. It comes back to you through the assessment, but it's not in the budget that you'll see tonight. At the high school, again, we're looking at adding the English Language Arts Social Studies teacher, one. We're looking at adding one para educator intervention specialist. We have put in a placeholder for vocational education of 5%. I know Stafford announced tonight a little bit higher than that, but we don't know enrollments yet and we don't know Hannaford yet. I don't know a number yet, so I put 5. It will change and we'll know that mid to late December. We did add sort of a pre-late run. So we have a late run that's designed to help students get home after sports, and I think that's 4:30 at least. And so we've added an earlier late run, one hour earlier, 3:30 for other students who might need to stay for academic help, support, or other reasons. So we have added, I didn't know what to call it, so we call it a pre-late run. I can think of too many words for not as late as the first late run. And there is also an Otter Valley extraordinary student as well that's not in this budget. We recognize that we need some support. We recognize with the dropout rate that we've had, we are struggling at all schools with truancy and that we need some sort of help and support. So we have put in $100,000 to define and design a job description and a position for that. The, you know, whether that is school social work, truancy, SRO, safety liaison, that's still to be determined, but that is also included. And now for Otter Valley District Rye, so the whole OVU, we did put in 10.71% for a placeholder on assessments. The Rutland Northeast assessments that we presented in November were up 7.66% plus 3.5, sorry, 3.05% for those extraordinary students. Two of them are here, one is at Barstow. So we did put in a placeholder for that. We will know equalized pupils anytime now. I haven't gotten it yet, but I expect it anytime between the 5th and the 15th of the month. And then we will know how Rutland Northeast shares are split, how the pie is split between Otter Valley and Barstow, and then that will be automatically adjusted. But to put a number in so that we had a placeholder, I put the full 10.71. And again, remember that what's not included in the line by lines of each of the schools or in the school budgets that you can see on your paper is the student from OCA and the student from Otter Valley, who are one of those students that meet that extraordinary definition. So we continue to maintain smaller, continue to maintain smaller primary class sizes. We are focusing on primary literacy instruction. We also spend a lot of time ensuring equity of services across the schools, not just in do we offer it, but how frequently do we offer it? Are we offering it with, you know, fidelity? Other things have been adjusted, salaries and benefits. Per master agreement, this does include what you just ratified. I was hoping and anticipating you would say yes. It does also include increases for that non-union staff based on comparables around the, not the nation, the region. Then line by line adjustments. So we look at, you know, we spent more in custodial supplies. Is that a one-time situation? Or was that because supplies cost more and adjusted those lines accordingly? And then health insurance, which of course is another big driver. Just to remind you, that is determined by statewide arbitration, which is a good thing in that every school employee, whether they work for Rutland Northeast or they work for any other school in the district, get the same benefit. And that benefit requires us to pay 80% of their premium. The premium went up 12.7% this year, where that's what the, what BHI has requested of the Department of Regulation, federal regulations. So what's not in there yet, I said it before, but I just want to remind you. Still have a lot of pieces to come together to give you a full picture. We don't have revenues, so we will, we do have a fund balance surplus. You'll remember last May, we talked about how much went into the facility fund and how much we were going to return to taxes. There will be $200,000 returned to taxes. Last year it was 460. We did that intentionally, kind of recognizing that we wanted to step down. Vocational education, I put 5% in just to put a placeholder in. Same with assessments, I put what we're at, 10.71. The estimated tax rate, so the Commissioner of Taxes has announced their December 1st letter. Do you all get that?
Yeah.
You do? Okay. So what's important there is that homestead tax rate or the homestead yield. And the homestead yield is projected in that letter at $15,479. This is dictated by a formula that takes a look at the $66 million that is a surplus that the state has right now to calculate that number. And it adjusts for other things and projected spendings. And it came up with, this is the yield you would need to make and need the needs of education services in Vermont. That is up from 13,314, that's up 16%. That's the second year of an unprecedented increase in the yield. And so what does that mean? So the yield is, think of it this way. For the first, in this example, $15,479 we spend per equalized pupil, we have a dollar tax rate. And for every percent we spend over that, our dollar tax rate goes up equally. So if we spend 1% over it, then we have a dollar one tax rate. If we spend 10% over it, then we have a dollar 10 tax rate. So when you see this type of unprecedented increase, that means that your dollar in this year's tax will now raise $2,165 more per student. So before you go to the bank, happy about that. Also recognize that the last component of the formula is the common level of appraisal. And the common level of appraisal comes out late December. I usually consider it my Christmas gift. I am anticipating to see declines in our CLA. We have, again, sort of pre-pandemic, pre-2021, we were all right around the 100 mark, which means our property values as listed in the town were selling very comparably to what the market was doing. Then the pandemic happened and we all saw property values go up, sales prices go up, and that continued. CLA is a three-year average. We are in the third year of growth. So this third year is when we're going to see the largest decline in our CLA. And so what happens when your CLA changes? Again, it's all about the percentage. So if your CLA is at 100%, then your property tax is going to not be adjusted. It's going to be whatever it works out to be. If your CLA is at 90%, your property tax is going to be adjusted by 10% to bring it up to 100%. Likewise, if your CLA is at 110%, then your property tax is going to be adjusted down 10% to bring it to that 100. So it's hard to predict how good that $2,165 is going to be until we start receiving common level of appraisals from the town. And that's where our tax rate differs town by town. So we have a unified union equalized tax rate. It will be what it is, $1.50 because I can do that in my head. And then each town will have their own CLA. Anybody who has a CLA of 100% will have $1.50. Anybody who has a CLA of 90% will have $1.65, 15% higher or 10% higher than the $1.50. Does that make sense? So I don't know that yet either. And then equalized pupils, I'm expecting them any day now. Equalized pupils are used to share the assessment numbers. So as soon as I have equalized pupils, we do a huge review process on equalized pupils. We start with what the October 1 enrollments are. And it's a time when I am, another time during the year when I'm not well-liked. As I call each secretary and say, it looks like your grade 3 has dropped about five students. That doesn't make sense to me. Can you help me figure it out? So we do investigate that equalized pupils to really feel confident that we capture all of the students that we should be capturing. And then the last piece is vocational education. We will get numbers in December. We pay vocational cost to Hannaford and to Stafford based on a six semester average of students who attend. So it's the six semesters right up, including this one. So it's six semesters starting with the fall of 2023, 2022 going back. We pay that average and it's whatever rate they end up setting. I don't know those rates yet because they are not finalized. They're in the process that we are still finalizing.
It went up today.
It went up today, 6 something?
6.5.
6.5. And while Stafford is our most, is the biggest component of our vocational education, Hannaford is twice the cost. So what does that all mean? Great, Randy, you've done a lot of talking. The current budget is 22 million. The proposed budget is 24 or 1.3 above that, or an increase of 5.91%. With all the caveats that I just explained to you. Just as a reference point, last year, the budget went up 4.78. So this is just different ways to look at that. So where are we spending that additional 5.91%? So these are the same numbers, just looking at them in different ways. And the first is looking at them by department. So you can see of the 5.9%, 2.8% is direct instruction. So that's classrooms, that's classroom teachers, unified arts, special education. The only thing that that doesn't include is library, media, nurse, guidance. The next line or the additional 1% is student support services. And this is where you will see behavior specialist, dean of students, guidance, nurse. Instructional staff support is, well, you can see those are our two bigots. The rest are small changes. But instructional staff support is the library. So the cost of all of the librarians, the books, the media, those type of things. General administration, that's the board cost. That's professional development, legal fees, those type of things. School administration, that's each of the school's offices, obviously. Fiscal and technology, that's the central office cost. You can see that that is the 10.71% increase. Facilities, that's the cost of running all of our facilities. Interesting number to know, right? Because we've been talking a lot about facilities. So the cost of, that's custodians, that's maintenance, that's plowing, that's repairing the windows, that's heat and electric and water. So all of our facilities cost about $2.2 million a year to operate. Transportation, pretty obvious to and from school. But it also includes the Stafford and the Hannaford run, the late runs that we talked about, co-curricular trips, field trips, and extracurricular sports trips are all included in that. Debt service, that's just the loans on our facilities and our improvements over the years. And then the transfer for reserve funds, we don't budget for that. That's the conversation we have in May and June at the end of the year. And last year, because you've got three years of information there, we did transfer $309,000 into the facility. So this is another way to look at it. Okay, so that's by department, but what are we really buying? You know, what are we getting? So our 5.91%, 3.25 is going into salaries. So the biggest piece of salaries and another 0.89. So 4% of our 5.91% is going into our staff salaries and benefits. Purchase services, it's another little tiny percent, and you can see that the rest are there. Assessments is the 2.78%. And that's the Rutland Northeast assessment. That would also include the vocational transportation, vocational tuition as well is in that line. And then this just kind of looks at it school by school. You know, it's not necessarily a, school by school becomes very confusing because we do a lot to regularize and be equitable in staffing ratios. But that doesn't take into account where the teachers might land on a teaching salary or a teaching scale, whether they're newer or older, that type of thing. So just a couple of things, I'll fill this in for 2024 once I have that information. But we had 1,272.7 equalized pupils. Equalized pupils is a formula. It's a formula that weighs high school, 7 through 12 students higher because they believe it costs more money, and it does, to educate a high school student. It weighs preschool students less because they go to school 10 hours a week instead of the 27, 30 hours a week that everyone else goes through. It adds additional money for poverty and additional money for English as a secondary language or ELL learners. I'm expecting that 1,272 to be fairly constant. We haven't seen a decline overall through OVO, but we have seen declines at the high school. It's a two-year average as well, so it helps shelter that decline. Last year's education spending for equalized pupil was $17,408. You'll remember that the, you won't remember, but I will because this is my, this is what I do. The yield was $13,314. So what that means is our tax rate is $1.32. And that's by literally taking that $17,000 that we spend per pupil and the first $13,314 is at a dollar. And then percentage-wise, the additional $4,000 brings it up to $1.32. Just to give you some information, one cent on the tax rate last year was $169,000. So any changes to your budget, one way or the other, to about $170,000 would sway your tax rate by a penny. And then 1% on the budget is $227,065. So some of this is redundant. In November, Visbit did announce the health insurance and our share, a premium increase of 12.7%. The commissioner's letter is out. This is the second year of a really favorable rise in yield. The non-residential rate is out. The average homestead tax rate is projected, that's supposed to be $1.31, not a percentage, sorry. So when they do this letter, they say, average-wise with this yield, we're expecting tax rates to be $1.31. But that's the equalized rate. That's before CLA. After CLA, they're expecting that the average taxpayer will see an increase of 8.52%. So Jeremy?
Just had a quick question about the dropout rates at Otter Valley and the projections for the budget, for this budget. Was that accounting for additional dropout? Students dropping out or like the same dropout rate or is it assuming there's going to be no kids dropping out?
It is not and not necessarily. So a couple of things happened last year. And I think you can help me as well. That was the year, last year to this year, was when we realized the student that we've been hoping and anticipating will come back isn't coming back. So they came literally off the rolls. So there might have been students that would come back for one day every 10 days, and that way they stay on the roll. But we realized they were not, that they really were, and had dropped out. So no, we have not projected an equal dropout rate. We haven't seen that type of dropout regularly, year to year. We believe it's more of a catch-up for pandemic dropout, pandemic losses. Is that a fair statement?
Yes. I mean, I can't speak for Otter Valley last year, but I think throughout the state, we were doing everything we could to keep kids engaged in school through the pandemic. And we would have been less likely to drop them under normal procedures. This year, we're back to kind of normal order where if we haven't seen a 16-year-old student for 10 days per state procedure, we're removing them from our rolls. we're removing them from our roles.
And part of what Michael and OB is prioritizing is more work-based learning and credit recovery to be able to avoid just that.
And you'll remember, maybe you don't, Jeremy, but we did, at last year's budget time, put in a vocational educator at Otter Valley. So that position is new this year.
Is there any, are there any signs of whether the dropout rate is maintaining the same rate that it was between last year? Or if it's gotten better, worse?
I would say it's gotten better. Again, because there was kind of a, yeah, there was a cleanup as the year went on last year. I mean, worse, again, it's tough for me to not have year-over-year comparisons, but we're, we've all, in addition to focusing on work-based learning, we've also like ramped up our truancy process and are communicating more with families. Anecdotally, I think that worse, I would say that over the course of this year, I can certainly count on one hand, the number of students that have dropped out. I probably have a few makers left over. I think we've unenrolled two, two to three students this year.
I have two questions now. I'm just curious, the students that are unenrolled, is that due to them leaving? Or is it due to like being expelled? And then do we have a behavior problem that we need to deal with so that we reduce dropouts?
So they're not expulsions. The, most students, you know, when students leave school, very rarely do they come and say, I'm leaving school. Generally, what happens is they just stop attending. And state procedure says that if a student above the age of 16 is unexcused absent for 10 consecutive days, that is a signal that we are expected to drop them from our roles. We send a letter, inform them about future educational options. We tell them that all they need to do, if they want to continue their education at Otter Valley, is come back and reenact. But yeah, you, you do get some students who we're engaging with, and they'll say, I want to go to Vermont Adult Learning. But that's less common than a student having an interruption.
And then I have an unrelated question.
Go for it.
More questions? So I saw that the health insurance is going up and we have new positions. Is that correct? So how come our benefits have gone down?
Really good question. There's two reasons for that. One, we build the budget based on who we have right now versus who was in last year's budget aged up. So who we have right now, we have maybe, well, it seemed like a big turnover of staff this summer, maybe a 15% turnover. So they might have been, you know, replaced family plans with singles, that type of thing. And then the other thing that I failed to mention, so thank you, is part of the arbitration and included in health insurance was the premium went up 12.7%. Our shares stayed at 80, regardless of what tier they selected. But the amount that we contribute or pay to a health reimbursement account to help offset the high deductible plans that we offer, again, according to the state arbitration, reduced. So licensed staff lost $200, per licensed staff lost $200 on the single tier and 400 on the family, everything else, the two-person, the three-person, and the family tier.
I also have two questions. The first one is related to this discussion about truancy and so forth. This new position, I'll just call it truant officer for convenience. The last meeting, we had a fairly intensive discussion about behavioral issues. I came out of COVID and the principals anticipated there was a kind of bubble for six or seven years possibly of difficulties. Are we anticipating this truant position to be for that period? Or is this something that 25 years from now, we should expect someone doing that job because of the way society is?
So I think I'll answer it. So I think that's a really good question. First, we're not calling it a truancy officer. I understand you saying that for just simplification purposes, but just want to make sure we're all on the same page. We don't know what that position will look like, right? We see this level of need related to engagement and truancy. We also see this level of need related to general safety compliance and coordination. Part of it's coming out of the safety audit, which we're still waiting for. I think it's end of December, beginning of January. We will get back the final report. But part of it is based on conversations with them. They went to all of the schools. And kind of popping as big needs were related to safety procedures generally, right? They say people pay really, really good attention if you're having a drill, if something really bad just happened in a school somewhere across the nation, right? Or it happens to be a month that you're focusing on it. Otherwise, you know, people go about their daily jobs. So unless you have someone whose job it is to focus on safety procedures and coordination, people's jobs are so filled with other things that they kind of lose the thread of that. That's one piece of it. The other piece is the truancy, which is not an OVO's and Otter Valley-centric problem. It feels a little bit like it is just because the age of when we officially allow dropouts is 16. Let's make sure we all are on the same page. Our elementary schools are also struggling from very large numbers of truancy. Rutland County happens to be the largest area of need. The why I don't totally know, except we're kind of in this strange bubble of services. Southern areas have a lot more services. Chittenden County has a lot more access to services, so part of it's related to that. But so in conversations, it's can one person, potentially a safety liaison, be able to meet all of those needs of being able to work with students and families around truancy, engagement, why are you not here? Also able to keep an eye S U-wide on our behavioral practices? Also be able to keep an eye on our facilities? Why does that classroom door have a rock outside, right? Like, I don't necessarily know that, but as a safety liaison's walking around, they might. So it's kind of this Brenda held a placeholder because we've been having these conversations and we don't really know how to meet so many different needs and be able to kind of mesh them together. Dan French, the secretary of ed, is coming to RNESU tomorrow. We were identified as definitely an area to be paying attention to. Part of it happens to be because of Rutland County's very large truancy numbers. Part of it is because, like I said, we are one of those areas that are flagged for high truancy, some disengagement, mental health, and kind of isolated from services. So how can we push supports in? And we know the workforce shortage is in all of Vermont, but it's hitting our schools really hard. So if we throw another mental health counselor in the budget, are we even going to be able to fill that? As opposed to, is there a retired SRO? Is there someone who can kind of merge these positions? So it's really just a matter of us all brainstorming and trying to think out of the box. How are we going to support like all of the OVO schools? That is a very long-winded answer.
Well, that's good. So my other question is even probably going to be harder to answer in more speculative. But we've got, we've had two years of big yields, two unprecedented rises in yields. I can only assume that's, the basis of that is federal stimulus spending, and that's about to end. We've got a new Congress that's going to be reluctant to do that. Inflation rate reflects that. I think a general reluctance to spend massive stimulus funds, I think those days are over, at least for a few years. Are we in danger of hitting a cliff? So that rather than saying, oh, we've got this great new yield coming in, it's, it's back to almost nothing and we still have to deal with the inflation rates. In other words, one of my concerns is, are we living in a fool's paradise? We're like, okay, we're going to get through this year, fine. But three or four years from now, it's going to be potentially bad.
So yes and no. So the yield doesn't include any Esser funds? So it has nothing to do with the ARP spendings, all of those things that you are hearing about? Those are accounted for kind of outside of the yield. So the yield is specifically based on statewide property values, anticipated spendings, and real known surpluses in the education fund. That's how the yield is calculated. And I do, I don't think I've said this, but I know I've said it before. I want to remind you, this is just an announcement based on a formula that is dictated in statute. At the end of the day, the yield is set by the legislature. Every year, it's the last bill they sign and it goes into, so it might be different. It's not guaranteed that that's the number. So that doesn't include that, but there is an Esser cliff. We have received over $10 million in Esser funds. And we are currently spending those, you know, for various different things, including some construction. So that's easy because that's done and over and doesn't happen again. But we have over a million dollars in staffing positions that are funded in Esser funds that we know are going to run towards that cliff.
Other questions?
And that's a million district-wide.
So I have a couple of questions. My first question is, we had talked last time, I believe, about the ELE fund and the fact that there is a real issue with that at the moment, especially with what it's invested in and that we might need to think about not using the ELE fund to pay the debt service for Neshabie's.
Boiler?
Yeah, the boiler, thank you, boiler. So my question is, is there a reason why you didn't keep the debt service funded levally since it's only 0.04% of the budget? Or was it just, you know?
That's a good question. So the debt service is funded based on the schedules.
Okay.
What you're not seeing is the ELE fund comes in as revenue.
Okay.
So I haven't done revenue yet.
You haven't done revenue, okay.
So, so that's the one number that's done. Debt service is based on the schedule. That's not going to change. That's the one number that won't change. And then when I do revenue, so the conversation was, we have the majority of the ELE fund invested in large cap stocks. So they'd be, you know, if you looked at the portfolio, they'd be companies you recognize. And it is, we all have also seen what happens to our own retirement funds right now. They've taken a big hit because of market changes. And with us drawing out, as much as we are drawing out, to cover the ELE, the pellet boiler project at Neshabie, we're really draining that ELE fund quickly. So we should be thinking about, you know, remember investments are always for the long run. They're not necessarily changing our investment strategy. Plus, we're really, we could, but we're not allowed to change it drastically because we fall under the uniform investment procedures because it's public funds. But whether we start deferring some withdrawals and not take them and let the taxpayer pick up. That's a good question to ask when I, so when I do the budget and have that piece, I can kind of do it an if and or.
Okay.
So if you go back, you'll remember like one cent on the tax rate's about 169,000. The debt service on that project, I think, is around 100.
Okay.
That's from memory, so I'll have that information.
Okay.
When we have a bigger, you know, the rest of the puzzle.
Okay.
But thank you for bringing that up.
Well, that's okay. So my other question is regarding the dropout rate necessarily. And it's not really related to the dropout rate. But if you were to go back to the table of seniors, the number looks drastically different than what we anticipated. And I'm assuming that most of those are actually kids that are at Castleton doing their dual enrollment, because don't they become disenrolled?
We hope for that. We'd hope that was going to be part of the problem.
Oh, but it's not, okay.
What's part?
It was, it was six of them.
Just six of them, okay. But that is part of it.
It is part of it.
And so do we have any idea of how we anticipate how many kids are going to be doing that? Or is it just, you know, when we're putting the budget together?
So here's the good news and the bad news about that, okay? So the good news is they're still counted as our student for ADM. And they're still, that means they're still counted as an equalized pupil. So they're still in that 1,272 number you saw. What they're not in is sitting in our class, in a classroom in Otter Valley in grade 12. That's why they're out of there. And so remember when I told you, I, school secretaries hate to hear me call them this time of year because I'm asking about that. I know that there's going to be differences for things like that because that 10-1 is literally students enrolled in the school on that day, in that grade. And it can change because some students can move to a different. But the ADM can be higher because we have students in other placements.
Do you, and last question, you're probably not going to be able to answer this, but do you see that enrollment increasing for dual enrollment kids? I mean, is it starting to increase? I mean, I think we only had a couple last year, now we have six. Could it continue to?
I can follow up on that.
I'm just curious.
Again, statewide, it's become more popular, it's a great, great deal.
Well, right, well, and how does that affect us? You know, does that mean that we need to think about, you know, staffing for that senior class? I'm just curious if that was any of your thought process.
It was not.
Okay. Other questions? Greg?
Is this, I know you haven't factored in the revenue yet.
Right.
Into, what was it, 5.6%?
5.91.
5.91. So that's not actually the.
That's a meaningless number, honestly.
Because you still have to factor in things. But the surplus that we put back in and we staggered over years, so it wasn't so dramatic and everything. Is this the last year? I can't remember, or do we have one more year?
No, this is the last year.
So, so we're going to drop another percent just based on that? Because that's like 260,000. So now we're down to 4.91% just based on that revenue.
It goes the other way.
Oh, okay.
I love your thinking, but it goes the other way. It's less revenue than last year. So last year, we had 460,000.
What I'm saying is you haven't factored in the 260,000 yet, have you?
No.
Yeah.
But last year, we had 460,000. This year, we're only going to have 200,000. So that's a loss of $260,000 that we won't have to reduce that 5.91% in the tax rate.
Oh, I thought we still have some this year, so it's.
We had 200, not 460.
Have you factored in that 200,000?
Not yet.
Okay, so then we still will lower from that 200,000?
Yes. If you didn't have the 200, then you would go up 2%. There are 2 cents. But because you had 460,000 and now you have 200,000, you are already going up on 1 cent.
Other questions? Devin?
Just for clarification, the repair and maintenance is just repair and maintenance? It is not any kind of construction or putting in trailers or any of that kind of stuff?
Well, that's on your agenda, but.
I know, that's why I'm asking. It is, it is just for basic maintenance.
Yes, yes. So, I mean, that might be something like putting on a new door, right? So some of the things might actually meet the definition of capital improvement, but it's not like a renovation project or, you know, anything that wouldn't be more keeping our facilities current.
And that's, that's down, what, 50,000, is it?
It's up. Actually, I don't know, I don't have it in front of me. I keep looking up there.
Some are down, some are up.
Other questions? Okay, it doesn't look like it. So thank you, Brenda, for that. We will be looking at this again, probably in a couple of weeks, so, okay?
Negative 38,650 for repairs and maintenance.
Well, that's for one school.
That's just Otter Valley.
Okay.
And to be honest with you, that was a shift between contacted services and repairs and maintenance. But that's a good question.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So the presentation is going to be forwarded to your emails so that you can look at that.
It'll be posted online too, right?
Yes. Is there anything else here that we need? Is there anything else here that we need administration for? Otherwise, we can let them go. The only thing I can think of is Michael might want to stay for the, for the, that.
Modular?
Modular.
I'm excited. Brenda might too.
Okay.
There are no questions about the high-cost 504 students? I just want to clarify, if the board has no questions about that, whether it's in the OVU budget or the RNE issue budget, they're not in the budget tonight, so they're in the RNE issue budget. I just didn't know if we understand that. So if we do, I'm surprised there's no questions. But if there aren't, that's fine.
I don't think there's any questions. Sorry, Marcia.
I'm okay with that. I'm sorry, Marty. You're a smart board.
All right, I know, okay.
Thank you all. You're free to go. Welcome to stay, but free to go.
Have a good night. All right, so that we don't make Michael stay forever either. I would like to entertain doing the ESSER fund piece of governance process too. And then we won't make you stay later than that. Or Brett Fair?
All right, can I ask you to consider changing that sample motion?
Um, sure.
So we, you know, we talked about this at the last meeting at Lester. And Michael and I have talked since and we've talked with, the project will out to bid because it's federally funded and it's over the state bid limit. I don't want a limit to 375. When we talked to the vendors, one of the things that we talked about was whether we could go to a unit that was 76 feet. That would allow Michael more flexibility to provide classrooms for teachers who are currently on a cart. So I wanted you to go maybe to 450.
Really? Okay. Well, whoever wants to make the motion can put, I guess, any number in that you want.
And we'll bid out both.
Yeah.
Because it will be funded with ESSER and we'll want to know, you know, the whole ESSER picture, whether it can sustain that or not.
So let's get a motion on the table and then we can discuss.
I move that we authorize the use of the ESSER funds to purchase and install modular unit for OVUMHS for an estimated cost of $450,000.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Natalie, thank you. Okay, discussion. Where would this go?
What's it for?
So.
It's for Honor Valley.
I understand that.
So for, what's, we have a couple of things that are important about it. One is that as we try to have an alternative learning space that it not be physically located in the building. We have students who need like the ability to just walk in, do their like tutoring, alternative program, workplace learning. Just being in the building is really hard. So it needs, we need something not physically in the building. There's also several reasons why I think it's important that it be close to the building. Access to student services, the ability for administration to administer the campus and respond to issues that are going on. So the best location that we're able to determine right now is on the, well, really right outside that window there. So this would be between the library and the annex. We would need to, we'd use some of the grass area and then into the parking lot. We lose several of those parking spaces, but we would still have probably two or three that would be handicapped accessible. And we'd still be able to maintain the roadway there, yeah.
Okay, and so Devin was asking what is specifically, it was going to be used for?
So it's really a question of whether, if we go with a 52-foot, that's basically two classrooms and two offices. The thing that I'm, that is most important to me is that one of those classrooms is the alternative learning space. Then the second and third would be, the goal would be to move teachers off carts and into classrooms. Again, I've got, I've got two folks currently on carts. So adding, and I, you know, in the budget proposal, it's an additional ELA social studies teacher. So that would be three teachers without classrooms. If I add two classrooms in the modular and some office space for special educators, then I can free up, I can get every teacher a classroom, which I think is an important goal to have. And I anticipate that that would stabilize. Like that would, that would put us in a place where for the next few years we were able to have teaching spaces for all of us. We'd also like our work-based learning coordinators office to be out there, connected to the alternative program, just easier access to, you know, getting kids quickly off campus for jobs and that sort of thing. And we want our alternative program students to really be able to engage with that individual and be able to access internships.
Thank you.
Other questions?
How much is in the ESSER bank at the moment?
That's a really good question. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer. So, so we've had three levels of ESSER, ESSER 1, ESSER 2, ESSER 3, very aptly named. We are into ESSER 3. ESSER 3 starts at 4.9 million, so just under $5 million. And it's designed to last two years. The year we're in, fiscal year '23, and next year, fiscal year '24. In fiscal year '23, the year we're in, we do have a line item for the modular unit at Nashabe. The last time I looked, we were correct in kind of splitting that 4.9 equally, which means we would still have a good piece of that money for this into the fiscal year 2024 budget. We also know that there may be some positions that we would consider reducing in ESSER because we are very aware of the cliff and we are very aware that we're going to have to kind of gradually step down from it. So I don't know exactly, but I can look up more information on that. And I certainly will report that to Rattler Northeast. It's odd, both boards have to approve it because you will own it. But Rattler Northeast is the one who has granted the ESSER fund, so they'll buy it for you. So I will, you know, provide a budget to say whether this fully is covered in there or not and how that is going to be covered for their meeting and share that back with you guys.
How much space is currently there? Because you talked about a 56 or 74. So, I mean, how tight are we going to be pushing this into?
76 is, is tight.
Is tight?
Well, there's two, I've been told, beautiful trees there. And if you.
They're young trees. I noticed them the other day.
If you walk between, I mean, this is like at the level of me pacing it out. I haven't taken a ruler, but, or several rulers. But that's about, that's about the width of 76.
Okay. And you'll be blocking out all of the classroom windows that are there?
Most of those teachers would be happy. They don't like the sun coming in.
Yeah, okay. Those are eighth grade teachers, yeah.
I know some of them.
Other questions for, regarding? Yeah?
So this is going to sound like a complaint, but it's not. So I think it's something the board needs to think about. This is the third time, I think, in two years. I'm going to vote for this. This is the third time in two years we've, we've, I can't even think of the word. The, the units, what are they called?
Modular.
Modulars. That we've, we've added modulars. And that just doesn't seem like a sustainable, long-term strategy to me that, that we've got to think about these space needs. And I know, you know, we've had these discussions about middle schools and transferring, but adding modulars is, is not going to, going to work in the long term. And, and, and as nice as they are, they're not that nice compared to, you know, buildings. So I'm going to vote for it. I think the reasoning sounds great, but, but we need to start thinking more creatively about, about these issues.
Other questions? Concerns, yes?
Yeah, the 450,000 is going to be enough? I mean, I guess what I'm looking at is that, do we have to put a number on it? I mean, it's going to have to come back to us anyway, isn't it?
No, it won't actually come back to you. It'll come back to RNEU.
It comes back to RNEU.
But if we don't budget enough, then, you know, it's, it has to go out to bid, so.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It goes out to bid, you get the price, and it comes in at 500,000. You didn't put enough in.
Then we have to.
If you don't put a number on it at all, you get the bid back and you know what you have to pay. I guess, I don't know why we have to have a number on it to have a lot to bid.
You probably don't have to have a number. I wanted to give you some context. You have to, I have to prove to the state that you said, yes, you can put this in. So you do not have to put a number. We know that the Lester modular, which is 52, 28 by 52, was 205,000 just for the unit. And then, of course, there's all of the groundwork and site work. And we know that the Nashabe one was 228. We've never bid a 78-foot, so we're not sure what that would be. I envisioned we would bid both and keep our options open to see, you know, what the budget is and what it can sustain. But you're right, you don't really need, I need to prove to the state that this board said, yes, you can place this unit on our floor property.
The other good thing about a number is that we won't, we don't want to find out a year from now that they spent $800,000 on a modular because that would irritate me a lot. And probably you too.
You're part of the RNEU board.
Well, yeah, but we wouldn't necessarily see the number because we wouldn't know. She might come and tell us, but you've, we've already approved it. If we don't have a number, then, you know, it doesn't necessarily.
So she can get a bid and then not have that bid approved?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And leave the number, sorry.
Okay, that's what I would.
So I spaced out for a second. 450 will cover the 72-foot one that you're anticipating?
I'm not sure. If it doesn't, you know, so we know that it takes four to six months. We know that our goal is to have this in, in August. In order to have it in August, we need to do site work and have stamp plans to know what the site work is as soon as school leaves. So we're planning on bidding it out in January and bidding both so that we have some options.
Jeremy?
Is there any reason not to just bid it out before we vote on anything? And then, once the plan's complete, we vote on that?
State won't let me bid it out unless you have said it's okay for me to do that.
So can we just approve bidding it out? Because it takes away the number and the like not, the uncertainty of how much this is going to cost. Are we allowed to just, can we vote to allow you to bid the project out and then approve it later?
More than likely, RNEU is going to have to approve it too. And they would approve a number, to be honest. So, and, but RNEU would also look to see what you guys wanted to approve. And if that's 450, then that, then they're probably going to go with that. Otherwise, they'll put a number in there.
And the state does require me to prove that you said yes.
Natalie?
Can we just say up to $500,000?
Say whatever you want, but you have to have the motion changed.
Or 450, say we approve a modular that's up to a certain amount.
If it came, so here's my, so I, I'm just asking based on what you're asking. Let's say we approve the 450 and we get into it. We've bought the modular, we've done all the groundwork, and we realize that we're at 465. You're just going to come back to the RNEU board and ask us to approve $15,000 more, correct? Or how did, how would, how would you come back to RNEU and say, this isn't enough?
That's a good question. So there'd be two wings, and one is related to Kevin's question. If there's still ESSER funds, yes. If there's not ESSER funds, then I have to come back to this board. Because Rattler Northeast is now.
Right, that's true. Okay.
Now, I would hope that we never get that far, that we are never that far on our estimates. You know, that's the, the goal and the plan. We do know that construction prices have really gone up. We've also seen that they have started to level. I could not predict what happened two years ago when prices first doubled. So just as a context, at Barstow, we were going to rip up tennis courts and put in a basketball. So we were going to do pavement. If, we got a bid in the fall of $40,000. It was going to be done in the summer. We went, just like we do to your board, and we said, will you approve this with your facility fund? They said, yes. So over the bid limit, we bid it out, came in at 80,000. I would never have been able to predict that it would have been 100% more. We put it off a year because we said we didn't know if that was the new norm or if that was just a spike. And as it is, it was the new norm. But I can't predict that. So if something like that were to happen, so we would do things concurrently. So concurrently, we would bid out the unit and we would also bid out as much of the site work as we could based on the information we know about the requirements for the site work for the 52-foot unit. And then we would be monitoring the budget to make sure there's no other pot of money if those ESSER funds are not.
Okay. I have one other question. Do we have any fire marshal questions because you are tucking it in so close to the building?
They will have, they will have a part in that as well, the local permit. You know, we have to go through all of that. So we have not reached out to, to any of them yet, but they will definitely be one of our first conversations. And that's the place we're looking at right now. We, with all due respect, Michael and I, or at least I am not a facilitated person. So there might be something there that I don't know that would say that is a dumb place to put it. And somebody who knows that, you know, an engineer who has to do the wastewater connection or whatever would tell us that. And we start walking around and figure out where is the right place.
Okay.
I just want the record to state I have some. Very nice.
Other questions?
Uh, move the question.
All right, you're moving the question. So the motion on the table right now is to authorize the use of ESSER 3 funds to purchase and install a modular unit for OVUHS for additional classrooms on the OV main campus to the tune of $450,000. So, all of those that approve, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. There you go. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael and Brenda.
And Brenda, yes. Okay. So we're going to go back to, let's see. Let's, yeah, to the wayback machine.
Wayback.
Let's, yeah?
Could I make a comment?
Sure.
I, I would like to just recognize the thoroughness of the conversation. And I felt that that was really good, that so many people engaged and we got so much more information that way. It's the way we should do things. I think it was great.
Yes, I agree.
A reflection.
Thank you. Awesome. All right, we have 10 minutes left in our, actually, we should have more than that.
Half hour. We started at, or maybe even 35 minutes.
6:20, yeah, so we have a half hour. All right. So let us go back to the monitoring reports. Let's start with 2.5, the Emergency Superintendent Succession Report, which should be in your packet. That is from Kristen. Can I get someone to make a motion to accept?
I move we accept monitoring report for policy 2.5, Emergency Superintendent Succession.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Natalie, okay. Discussion, questions, concerns? There it is.
It was an excellent job. It's fun reading.
I bet.
It's just as fun writing.
Well, it also shows you have a good staff that you can lean on, which is nice.
And you have one of the best admin teams ever. Yeah. Okay. Other questions, concerns? Not hearing any, then I would entertain that you're ready to vote. So all of those that approve policy 2.5, Emergency Superintendent Succession, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, 2.5. It's done. All right, the next one is 2.7, Compensation and Benefits. Also, a monitoring report from Kristen. Was the next thing in your packet? Can I get someone to make a motion to approve?
I move we approve.
Or accept, actually.
Sorry. Accept the monitoring report for policy 2.7, Compensation and Benefits.
Okay, Barbara, a second?
Second.
Natalie, okay. Comments, concerns, questions for Kristen?
Yes, interpretation, it says the superintendent shall offer, shall not offer contracts or permanent employment to employees. This includes contracts for non-union employees. Compensation. And then below there, I guess my concern is that she's able to offer, who offers a job or a contract to somebody who's not a union employee?
Would that be Brooke?
What part are we looking at?
I think he's looking at this at the very bottom of the first page.
Uh, page, yeah, you got page one, and then it goes on to page two, because then it talks into-
Well, it's permanent employees is the question, is the permanent employment.
Right. And so we don't have any permanent employees that are not union?
No. So I, right, so they would be on an annual contract, they might be on a two-year contract, they might be on a three-year contract, they would never be on a permanent contract.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. All of those that approve policy 2.7, Compensation and Benefits, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. All right. The next one is our Own Board Monitoring Report 3.4, which is the Monitoring Superintendent Performance. So this is based, so this information that's here, or what's on there, is what we did last year. So I don't know if you guys want to embellish upon it, add something, take something out, or just approve.
It's 3.4, not 3.2.
3.4.
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Sure.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I'm seconding. So Derek and Barbara? Okay.
And then we can discuss.
Questions, concerns, additions, subtractions, like it the way it is?
I like it the way it is.
Okay, not hearing anything, so I'm going to go ahead and vote. All of those that approve 3.4, Monitoring Superintendent Performance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you for that. All right, now onto the fun ones. Governance process, we have some PG policies for action in the second reading. The first one is 3.2, Oversight of the Superintendent, which we revised for title, the title change only. All right. So instead of it saying 3.2 Accountability, we cross that out, Accountability, and we put Oversight.
I remember that conversation.
Remember all that conversation?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So can I get someone to make a motion to approve?
I move.
Okay, Greg, second?
Second.
Thank you, Natalie. Any discussion regarding the choice of wording? Not hearing anything, so all of those that approve the change from Accountability to Oversight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. All right. The next one is 2.10, Safety. It is a brand-new policy. It is in your packet. I'm assuming that this is based on the SBA, 2.10, Safety?
Where are there so many pages?
I don't know. While she's looking that up, if someone wants to make a motion to accept?
I move we accept-
Or approve, actually.
Okay, approve.
It's approved.
The executive limitation 2.10, Safety.
Okay, adopt, yeah, we could say adopt, too. Okay, second?
Second.
Natalie, yes?
Oh, right, it's an executive limitation. It came from a conversation where we knew we, not we, you all knew that you wanted to make sure that we were in some way, shape, and form attending to the safety of our students, but not necessarily seeing it living in the, you know, our actual ends. So the suggestion was that we turn it into an executive limitation. So this is my draft executive limitation for safety.
Ah, and then you would, yearly, you would report on it, compliance and whatnot, your interpretation and all that good stuff.
If I must.
If you must, yeah. If we approve it as an executive limitation. Okay. Questions, concerns, thoughts? This is only a first reading, so it would have to come again. Oh, no, I guess we approved it.
We, we talked about, we talked about it at the 11, the November 2nd, and there were suggestions made, like, the wording, including emergency adoptions, operations plan, excuse me, and-
And then we added communications on number 11.
Yeah.
How do I know this so well? Because I had to do the minutes for that meeting.
That's right.
I was sitting next to you when I said-
You're the clerk for a reason. There you go.
So all of the changes were made?
Yeah. So this is a second reading. Is it to your pleasure? Okay. So all of those that approve the adoption of 2.10 Safety as a second reading and as an executive limitation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, we have 2.10. All right. And the last one, because we've only brought this up, like, six times, is 4.5, Board Member's Code of Conduct. I met with Melinda and provided her with what this needed to say.
Do you want it with the red?
Yeah, thank you.
So all the red is in the code, in, in the-
Was in the original.
Conflict of interest, right.
So it's the changes, essentially, yes.
Yep.
Yep. So anything that struck out is what we wanted to take out, anything that was regarding conflict of interest, because it's in an RNESU policy already. And we did add a couple of lines. And you'll see at the top, we moved a line, and we added a line to number two.
And renumbered, yeah.
And we renumbered, yes. Other than that, we did nothing.
I move to approve.
Okay?
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, discussion? Hearing none. All of those that approve policy 4.5 with the changes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we have finally passed 4.5. Thank you for that. All right, we've already done S.R., we've already done our budget review. The next piece of the puzzle is the Board Report for the Annual Report. And what that is, is I will be writing a report for the annual report from OV UU, and I always like to ask you guys what I should write in it. So what have we done the last year that I should make mention of in the report that I write?
We further defined our end goal.
Okay. I also think we need to talk about the S.R. monies and the new modular units that we have in two of our schools by the time I write this report.
This is the annual report, so it's, this goes way back, the Wayback Machine again.
We're providing additional learning space for students at-
Yep.
-schools throughout the district, accommodating needs.
Okay. What else?
We should talk about the bus driver and para, let them know that we've brought them up to level, right?
Again, right? Well, I can see that we have a negotiated teacher and para bus driver. I don't know that I want to get into the, that's a-
No, but there were successful negotiations that came to closure satisfactorily, or whatever.
Yep.
First multi-year contract ratified in many years.
Yep, in many years, okay.
Right.
Well, you can think about it, but those-
Welcome to the new administration.
Yep.
Bless you.
We added a second student rep.
Oh, yeah.
Did I get you?
There we go.
Very much.
Kind of on a reminder that COVID effects are still here, and we're doing the best we can to support students and staff.
Okay. Well, that's a good place to start. I'll probably ask again at the December 21st meeting, before I actually write this. So, okay.
There'll probably be some updates on the library project you could mention, too.
Oh, yeah, we could talk about that, too. Yep, absolutely. Okay. So, Open Goshen Rep Board Seat Letters of Interest. So, is it my understanding we only got one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that is in your packet, the letter that we received.
Oh, right.
Okay. So, the letter that we received is from Mrs. Fernanda Canales. Yes? Thank you. And so, the letter's there. We can choose to approve her letter of interest, or we can go back out and ask for more, but honestly, she's going to have to rerun for the seat in three months, anyway.
So do you need motion?
Need a motion.
All right. I move that we, would it be to accept, or how did you want me to?
To, actually, I think we are going to-
Discuss.
A point?
A point.
Okay, so I would move to a point, okay.
A point, to the Goshen seat.
For the remainder of the term.
Oh, well, right, until March, because she'll have to rerun for the seat at that point.
I move that we appoint Fernanda Canales as the Goshen rep to the Otter Valley Board for the remainder of the term. Okay?
Okay. It was Derek and Greg, you could say they both seconded.
Yeah, they're fighting.
We won't fight tonight. So, all right, any discussion? None? All right, so all of those that would like to appoint Mrs. Canales, is that right? Yeah? Would like to put Fernanda to the Board as our Goshen rep to replace Dr. Mathis, big shoes to fill, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. So, now that we have approved you, would you just like to say hello and, and?
Hello.
Yeah. Okay, maybe a little bit more than that.
For those of you who don't know me, I worked in, as the Sudbury teacher and principal for 16 years, prior to my becoming a principal at Salisbury Community School for the following 16 years. Both of my children came to our, to these schools and graduated in 2005 and 2001, our children. This is my husband, and he also taught in the system in Lester Whiting Sudbury for 10 years.
32.
32 years. So we're very, this is like coming home. I am very comfortable here. I'm also very comfortable serving on the Board on the other side of having been a principal many years and knowing what the Board is. So, I appreciate the opportunity, and I am really happy that Bill is going to be a select ward. So if that means that he needs my help, I will get it. Anyway, no, I just, I'm, I'm really pleased. And I came tonight because I wanted to see the feel of the, of how you guys are working together, and it feels really, really nice. I'm looking forward to working with you.
Okay, well, the superintendent will probably call you tomorrow to let you know that you've got the job, so.
Okay.
Don't screen my call.
That's right.
I gotta head to work.
All right, thanks a lot for coming tonight, Eric.
Night, Eric.
Eric.
All right, so the next piece of the puzzle is Board Member Recruitment. So as you know, we have about five members that need to rerun for their seats. You would be one of them. Devin needs to rerun for his, Brett, if you want yours, Jeremy, and then Jen, who's not here. Other people who are up for reelection is Kevin, and who else? I don't remember. That seems like most of us, actually.
That was it.
It would be a big changer if you had more than that.
I know, right?
Greg keeps trying to leave, but he's not actually out.
I know, Greg can't leave for another year. So, okay. So just keep that in mind, those seats are up for reelection. And if you know someone who would be good to the Board, if you don't plan on rerunning, you know, invite them to check it out. Okay, review of the Board Annual Work Plan. So, obviously, the next couple of meetings, we'll just be talking mainly budget. Yep, we'll do that next. And, let's see, what is, our next meeting is set for December 21st. We're not going to do December 14th, because I don't expect that we will have any new information from Brenda in my discussions with her. So we're going to have an RNESU Board meeting that night instead. Lots of fun, games, if you want to come to a meeting. So that's what's going on there. Actually, we're going to do that at the very end.
Sure.
I'm going to move this to the Superintendent's informational report. Kristen, anything you want to tell us?
Sale of Route 7 property, just informational. We received 6,750 from the state of Vermont for the sale of property along Route 7, as approved by voters last March. Last meeting, we talked about federal grants, and there are a lot of words, a lot of acronyms, and not necessarily a lot of background information. So just for your information, those are what each of the, the pools are for, and basically, how you can and can't use them. I also hyperlinked in a place where you can go for all of the information related to COVID recovery grants, which definitely have a different shelf life than our federal entitlement grants, and also have a different level of flexibility. So basically speaking, we get entitlement funds, Title I, II, III, IV. We get Idea A, Idea B, and now, we get a bunch of S.R. funds. So that's basically what that is. We talked about the modular earlier today. For your information, we talked about this probably in August or September, but we are in the second year of all students get access to free breakfast and free lunch because of COVID relief. The Agency of Ed has also once again approved a PEBT plan, which is the pandemic EBT plan, so that families and students who already qualify for free and reduced lunch are also additionally eligible if they have a COVID-related illness on a, in a month where their school has five consecutive COVID illnesses. It's a little bit convoluted, but basically, the intent is to not contribute to food insecurity for families that are really struggling. So that's why that additional benefit is there. Parents and families don't have to do anything. Brenda and the schools work to figure that out. Basically, if a family already qualifies for EBT benefits, they just get an additional surplus on their cards that they already have for those months. So, again, Brenda works with our nurses and our secretaries to file that. All of our schools have already qualified, so we know that they already get the benefit. End of September, we already had at least five consecutive days of COVID absences. Rotland Herald Page, that's linked in there. If you didn't see it, it's also up on our website. Every six to eight weeks, we'll have a What's Cool in RNESU Schools. The first edition is linked in there, and again, on our website. It's really cool. Max Berman, one of our tech coaches, puts it together. He works with building principals and teachers. The point is to highlight non-academic, or non-academic, non-academic. The point is to highlight non-athletic and non arts and musics, things that typically get a good amount of press in our system, to really focus on some of the learning opportunities and expeditionary learning and things that are cool in the school. So, pretty cool, take a look. And then, again, Superintendent Series, people are watching the videos.
We get a lot of comments.
Are you going viral?
I am going viral.
Going viral.
You canceled our Netflix subscription.
I know, right? I know, I know. I got a feature coming on Hulu. I'll, I'll link that in there. So that's it.
I was the third person to subscribe, which means that none of you have.
So true.
Okay. So our next Board meeting is set for Wednesday, December 21st, at Neshabie.
About the Route 7?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Is the state, are we satisfied with the landscaping, or going to do when they-
I think so. Brenda seemed fine with it.
We had already, I think we had already approved that at an earlier, much earlier meeting.
Yes. Yeah, she just said it was informational, it went through.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. So, next meeting is set for Wednesday, December 21st, at Neshabie, at 6:00 PM. We'll be talking more about the budget. We'll also be having a couple of presentations at that meeting. We do have to stay for a legal matter, an executive session, which is regarding legal matter, but before you do- But before you do that, um, Derek brought an email that he wants to just provide to everyone regarding the project update for the Brayden Free Public Library.
We'd, we'd like a motion, actually.
Oh, you want a motion?
Yeah.
Well, now you're pushing it.
Sorry.
Because this is not an email, it's a piece of paper.
Yeah.
That's true. It was an email that, uh, only went to Derek, apparently, so, um.
Well, he, Len, who did the presentation from, um, is kind of taking the lead on this, and there's been a lot of activity on, on this project and, um, they're getting ready to cut the trees on Friday, but he just wanted to be clear that the board was approving the process because they can't put the trees back once they've cut, so.
Yes, you can.
It looks like everything's in line. And we can plant some new ones, but, but if, he just wants to know that it's a green light. And he's been very thorough, um, and helpful. He's, you know, connected with the principal here at OV and things are going.
What's the basis on how they judge the trees? Are they dead or are they in the way of something else?
No, they worked with, um, the, the county forester and also the forestry program director at Stafford.
Mark.
Mark, and, uh, so they went up and they looked at trees, they measured trees, they talked about trees. They're looking for some healthy trees to make some quality lumber for the library project.
I honestly don't think that you need board approval. I mean, it sounds, we've already given our approval for this to happen.
If you guys are comfortable with that, I'll just email him and say, go. It's, it's a standing approval to go forward. I mean, we don't need the mic.
We love the update, but I don't know that, we've already approved for this to move forward at our.
Well, the Hawk Hill Committee did not, um, have a quorum when this project came up. So I, I brought it to the board, the board approved it. So the board owns it, sorry, sorry. And they approved it, that's fine. I will, if you're comfortable with that, then I'll just email him tonight and say, green light.
As long as you also put some new trees in the places where you're cutting down.
The seedlings are there.
There you go, all right, perfect. Any other questions for Derek about that process? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to go into executive session at 8:15.
We'll be going to executive session.
Okay, Kevin, second? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How are you doing?